Approval of the minutes for the June 6, 2023 and July 11, 2023 Committee of the Hall meetings. Are there any changes or updates?
I did not see any. No.
Okay, motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Hall of June 6, 2023 and the Committee of the Hall July 11, 2023.
For a second.
All second.
To Ms. Carter, a second, and Councilwoman Turner. Any discussion on the motion? Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Okay, that all suits. And then we have one discussion item on the agenda for tonight. So it's a UAM's presentation on the current status of the Small Modular Reactors, or SMR. And we have Mr. Rich.
Walgi.
Walgi, perfect. Here presenting. He is the Carbon-Free Power Project Senior VP of Business Development.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Time is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. I think we will start with one item. Jackie Coombs is going to talk a little bit about the resource planning that UAMs is doing for all its members.
So I delegate into you, Greg, to pitch down. You're welcome. So I really appreciate the opportunity to come and give an update on UAMs and where we're standing in our project development, as well as move into our carbon-free power project. So UAMs has been doing a lot of resource development, and as you know, rates have increased for electricity across, you know, not only Utah, but across the nation. And, you know, we're going to be developing resources probably up to 15 years. I mean, resource development right now is very complex, and I can step through these, but it can take, you know, three to five years to even develop a project. And that's if, that's not addressing transmission issues. Transmission issues and being able to interconnect it and bring the energy to where you need it is definitely a different issue above and beyond project development. So we do have a red mesa project. It did come in in November of 2022. We entered into that with the Navajo Nation, NTU, it's 66 megawatts. But this project increased in cost, as well as it was delayed almost six months from being done, mainly due to supply chain issues. And so we're seeing price impact on almost every project that we're investigating. Steel solar is also delayed about six months. We're still in negotiations currently with that. Looks like that C O D date will even be pushed farther. Has to do with supply chain issues with panels being manufactured in China and the complexity of bringing them across. Zion Solar, and we're, we need to have, you know, batteries associated with our solar. We will be investigating putting batteries at our steel solar site just so that we can be able to store the energy so that we can take it when we need it. We're also working on geothermal. Geothermal, as you know, Murray belongs to the Hunter Plant, which is experiencing, you know, coal issues, ozone issues, as well as, you know, Pacific Corp saying that they're going to close it down. We thought it would be 2032, and they're, they're targeting now 2026 to 2027. So we definitely need 24-hour-a-day power long-term. Geothermal also provides us that, one reason why we're studying it. We've been sending RFP out, and we will be investigating with one developer and moving that project forward at 85 megawatts. We are, we do have a horsebeat wind project. We are looking at expanding that. When we originally developed it, it was 57 megawatts, but we, we did the site for 99. So we're looking at expanding it or moving it to either repowering or expanding it up to the hundred, to plus megawatts. We are looking at additional natural gas. As you know, natural gas is easy. We can follow our load with it. It can be on and off quickly, but it does still have a carbon footprint, which we're concerned about. If we put in any natural gas, it will have to be amortized over 10 years because of the new regulations associated with fossil fuel. We're looking at a waste heat project. That is a short term. It's a, it's a project outside of price. It's an existing plant. They're looking for an off-taker for that, but it will only be a seven-year contract. So you can see we're doing a lot of things. We're also doing an integrated resource plan. A lot of the city council will be joining us at our member conference in a couple of weeks. We have our consultants who will go totally over our integrated resource plan. What resources the, the UAMs as a footprint should be pursuing, what best fits our needs, and, and we'll go in more depth in what they're recommending. You know, resource adequacy is very important. We have to have resources to cover our load, or we'll be penalized, you know, and, and we're trying to integrate the entire Western grid. So a lot of things going on, but, you know, we also are doing our carbon-free power project. And with all of the projects that we're looking at, we believe that our carbon-free power project is really the best long-term solution for our membership. And that's the project that Rich is headed, heading up to do business development. I know Murray's aware of the project, but we'd like to give you an update on where we at in the project, and we'll turn the time over to Rich.
Thank you, Jackie. A little bit of background about me. I was the CEO of Rocky Mountain Power from 2006 to 2016. Part of the reason I'm involved in this project is I was on the original advisory board in the kickoff meeting in Idaho Falls in 2015, and we foresaw the need eventually to have a carbon-free 24-hours-a-day resource. And as you may know, Pacific Corp has put a small modular reactor in Kemer in their plans to deal with all the issues that Jackie just laid out. And it's the same for everybody in, in the industry. The world's changing dramatically. I think most of us who have experienced operating system think we're going to need something that we can turn on and off as we need 24 hours a day. Can't just rely on intermittent, somewhat unpredictable energy. Can't stack enough batteries. So Mason Baker, CEO of UAMs, approached me and asked if I would help out on this project, and I agreed. So the project is set up as an independent business. It's an LLC. It's wholly owned today by UAMs. And it was established really to deliver carbon-free power. That's the objective, and it's in the name. The project is located in Idaho Falls. It includes six small modular reactors. We'll get into what that really means and what they look like in a bit. It's cited at the Idaho National Laboratory. It's the nation's number-one nuclear reactor study and analysis and research lab in the United States. It's where all of the Nuclear Navy reactors have been created and tested out. So we're right amongst a bunch of reactors. Lots of people used to having the reactors. Workforce is available. Right now, the current participants are all UAMs members, and I think you're very familiar with the project, having been in it at one time. My job is to find other participants other than just UAMs members. So that's what I've been focusing on, and we are making some progress, and I'll elaborate on that a little bit. Just to remind you the project characteristics, or if you're just seeing them for the first time. The economic life of the project, we're calculating of 40 years, only because that's the duration of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission license that you can initially get on a nuclear reactor project. However, they have extended the line from a permitting perspective for 20 years, and nearly all of the major nuclear reactor plants still in operation. This is a 77-megawatt design for each of the units, so that adds up to 462 megawatts of output from the project. You see 50 up there because that was something that the original design was made to, but they found out that the reactors actually have more capability, so we've operated them to 77. We just submitted the, the application to get that design approved. And one of the things the Department of Energy has done in the federal government to try to encourage nuclear reactor development, the small modular reactors, not the, not the ones that we currently use today, that provide about 20% of the energy in America. Still 20% of our electricity comes from nuclear power plants. They are, one of the things that UAMs was able to do, they received $1.4 billion of cost share support for the project. And the UAMs was able to negotiate to get that money primarily in the front end of the process where the permitting was a little bit more of the uncertainty. And so they have recently, Congress allocated, authorized that 1.4 billion. So that in essence is now being set aside over the next three years. We'll get, we will spend about 4 billion, excuse me, 400 million up to this point, and then there's another billion that has been allocated and authorized. Right now, the project is intended to come online with the very first one of the six modules in December of 2029. That's, that has been the delivery date for the last two years, which is in and of itself a little rare for any big industrial project, particularly nuclear, nuclear projects. And then we'll bring on the remaining five modules sequentially over the remainder of 2030. By the end of 2030, we'll be at 462 megawatts about. So this is a picture of a module, and it's, it's a little misleading because that picture, some of you have been to Corvallis and seen the top third of that design. It actually is 90 feet tall. So when they talk about small reactors, it's not really small. It's small in the context of the big nuclear projects. And one of the advantages of this technology, it really is a resizing of technology that's already used throughout the country and the world. So the doctor who visioned this downsizing, and the primary reason, reasons being, one, you can manufacture these in a facility rather than on-site by piece by piece, and I'll be able to show you some of the consequences of that. Also, you can size them differently. So New Scale, who is the provider of this technology, has a four-module design, a six-modular design, and a 12-module design. So depending upon the utility they're working with or the customer, they can size the project. It's, it has a very high capacity factor, meaning it'll run 95% of the time. And to put that into perspective, a coal plant is considerably lower than that, as is a natural gas plant, because these projects aren't like a coal plant, where every once in a while you have to do a major and minor overhaul. So if you have a coal crusher in order to crush the coal, in order to feed it into boiler, those need to be rebuilt every four or five years, and they're expensive, time-consuming. You don't have similar moving parts in the reactor. It can move up and down, so if you have a great deal of renewable energy and you want to follow the load versus the, what the variability of the renewable resource, you could do that. One of the things the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the Western Energy Electric Coordinating Council insist on, if you run a utility, that you have resource adequacy. That means you have enough resource and enough backup resource that if you lose part of your generation portfolio, you can keep the lights on. And most of that done today is done by projects that you can dispatch. People don't try to figure out whether a solar project is going to be there for that adequacy. In California, it's not accepted. So if you, you need to have some sort of energy that'll run 24 hours a day, we think this is the best one primarily because it is non-emitting, and it will be useful in that regulatory context in the lifetime of the project. One of the other things about the new, all of the new reactors have a different safety mindset and design. So one of the things about the new scale technology is if something happens, the line to the plant trips off, or there's some alarm goes off and says, hey, we should, we should turn these reactors off. The operators don't do anything. It's all programmed in. So you're not expecting them to have to go pull a lever, turn on a pump, turn something off. The other thing is you don't need to have additional water. And as I'll show you, these modules are underwater, so they're in a big cooling pool. And so even if you turn the power off to the project, which most projects you can, it will continue to run. Yes?
So how much water is required if you don't need it to cool down because it's already in water?
That is a very good question, and I'll get you the answer. Because, well, I don't know what the gallons are in the original pool. Do you have that, Jackie said, or?
No, I didn't.
Or don't. But we'll get that to you. That's, you know, I haven't had that question asked, but I think it's going to be a lot. Bigger than.
And then?
Well, there's 200 gallons of kind of makeup.
So, but we went to dry cooling, so we don't use it to cool anymore, and that's like 95% of the water usage. So we'll be dry cooled. We don't, we don't have water towers. So, and the reason we did that is because we outweigh the cost of, of the water versus, you know, acquiring the water rights, and we believe that it's the, the environmental right thing to do is to dry cool.
But it still requires water here.
Well, yeah, it was still used to, portable water for the facility, and the pool doesn't get killed all the time. It stays stagnant. Once it's still, they'll lose a little bit, but it stays unless they have to cool it. So unless they had a disaster, the cool, the pool acts like a sink, and it will cool the reactors. But it's not, it's not being utilized all the time. It's just, you know, they'll have to.
Whereas before it was, is that correct?
No. It was the cooling towers that cooled the steam that was using the water. But the pool stays constant unless they, you have to use it to cool the reactors in, in case of emergency.
Okay. Yeah, if you, yeah, I just said it's no water. So that's, you know, to me that.
So when Fukushima happened, they had to have water, you know, all the big things, they had to, they needed water to cool the reactor. This one does not need additional water to cool it. So what happens is that the rods go into the, to the, into their safety position, and then the water will actually cool the, cool the reactor itself. In only over 30 days, then it will cool, so it won't, you know, burn itself up like they did at Fukushima. That's what that means, no additional water.
So, so as an engineer, let me answer the question the way I was thinking about it. You're swimming, you're filling up a swimming pool. I don't know how many gallons of water that is. That's the question we will answer, because it's big. It's thousands, tens of thousands of gallons. But as Jackie described, it isn't used up. The loss will be through evaporation, basically. So you'll have to put some more water in the reservoir to keep it topped off, but then the other water's used to cool off the, basically the turbines that are creating the electricity. And as Jackie said, the original design was to use water cooling, and that was traditionally what was used in all thermal plants because they're more efficient when they're water-cooled because of the rain can cycle and a bunch of other stuff. But water is so dear in the West, and we've had these droughts. We concluded that the movement is to air-cool, which doesn't require near as much water. But occasionally, you do have to refresh those waters because it's a little consumable. So that'll be measured in a couple hundred gallons a minute, which seems like a lot for a project this size. So Jackie kind of jumped in front of my, my project slides, and I won't have to touch on them. That's okay. He's done this more than I have. I just, you know, I got my, got my mojo going. Anyway, so this is a picture, a drawing of what the, the project will look like. And there's two or three things here that are quite surprising to me. It's a 462-megawatt design, and Jackie just went over the air-cooled condensers. And usually, when you use air versus water cooling for these thermodynamic plants, you take a big efficiency hit. But one of the offsets to the efficiency of the equipment itself is that the air cooling fans are less expensive than the investment you have to make for the water cooling process. So in the end, it's about a wash as far as cost goes. Each module will have its own steam generator and electric generator, and so that we can take one of the modules out of service to refuel it, and the rest of the plant will operate. And that's different than the big projects. And so that's another advantage of these small modular reactors put together in packages. The spent fuel storage is right outside the building, so it never leaves the site. It has to be, doesn't have to be transported anywhere. And so that is the technology that's currently used now all over the world, that kind of storage capability. One of the other things that's interesting to me somewhat because we're on the lab site, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has said, for emergency planning, you only have to worry about what's inside that fence line. So generally, in the past, when you did emergency plans, you basically had to take a protractor out, ten miles, draw a circle, and then you had to have a plan for all of that for an emergency. That is now contained within the fence line, and it's only 65 acres. So 65 acres would give you about 65 megawatt, give you less than 65 megawatts of solar, considerably less. So it's about five, five acres a megawatt for a solar project. So very efficient use of land and water. I talked a little bit about the spent fuel storage. The Department of Energy has the responsibility to ultimately deal with the energy out of the, the spent fuel containers. Right now, they have set money aside to do that. There was a, a plan to put them all in one location at Yucca Mountain in Nevada. That plan didn't come to fruition. So right now, the, the spent fuel is stored at each reactor site, either some of them underwater or some of them using this technology. So there has yet, to my knowledge, been an accident about moving those casks around, but they don't move very often because they're not being centralized anywhere. They're still residing where they were used. So this project is the farthest along of any small modular reactor project in the country. It got an earlier start, has a little easier technology to manage. The company that we're working with, New Scale, who is the OEM, original equipment provider, focused a lot and primarily on how do they get the permits to do these projects? Because one of the big delay factors is how long it gets, how long it takes in order to get all of the permits required to run the plant. And understandably so, people are worried about safety issues, security issues, environmental effects. So the NRC has a very thorough licensing approach. New Scale started early and did a lot of outreach to the, to the Nuclear Regulatory regulators. They didn't just say, here's, here's our application. What do you think? They spent years developing relationships and communications channels. So one of the successes of this project is that they were able to get approval for that emergency planning zone, that first standard design, the first in the, in the We have just put in the review of the SDA for the 77-size megawatt. It was announced today, actually. And one of the other things we're doing to manage the risk of the project is to put in a limited work authorization. And what that allows us to do is do some of the site preparation and some of the site testing in advance of really spending the money to construct the project. Now, one of the requirements, if we get that and something happens with the project, you have to undo all of that, but that will help us take several months out of the overall.
Would that be onsite or?
Onsite. So whatever.
So not in quarters?
Yeah. This reservoir is just going to be sunk into the ground. It's going to be gigantic, so. But you can do like site preparation, make some roads, a few other things around the site. But you, until you get the final license, you can't really afford to take the risk to really start buying things, digging big holes. So it's very important. One of the changes in the industry is it used to be, if you wanted to do a nuclear power plant, you got your design approved. After that was approved, you'd start building, and then there was another license you needed, which was to operate. And the design and the operating licenses weren't done in a coordinated fashion, so one of the big challenges. The nuclear industry is, you build your project or get started on the project, and then the commission would come and say, yeah, wait a minute, but I want it to be rotated 15 degrees. I mean, that's kind of a simple example, but it's actually a real example. So now you, you make an application both for your design and your operations, and it's called the Combined Operating License. And we are in the process of putting that together. We expect to submit that in 2024, and it will take a year for the NRC to look at that application and say, yes, we agree, you've met the, met the conditions and the requirements to get a license. And then we expect to have that issued in 2026. Done in 2026. We're expecting about three and a half years to build everything to the point we can install that first module in the end of 2029. So one of the other things that the project has done is it actually has taken some of that money that the Department of Energy has provided for cost share, and we have gone to Korea, the only place in the world where this kind of work can be done. It's the only foundry left on the planet that can actually pour the steel into these forms and then forge it into the container for these reactors. And this is a picture of the first one of the reactor tops in the New Son Factory in South Korea, where they're actually starting to do the work on that first reactor vessel. So one of the big challenges of the project, straight up, is that it's expensive. It's expand, more expensive than most of the resources any of us have dealt with in the recent past, except replacement power for 102 on the market, which we compete with. So, so whenever people say, well, yeah, but I could just do a solar project, and I wouldn't have to deal with this. Well, fact is, prices are going up. This initially will be more expensive than nearly every other option, perhaps all of them, but eventually, over 40 years, and this is how the industry's always worked, you wind up, the, the, the resources that come on afterward are as or more expensive than this. So when you make this commitment, you really are thinking into the future decade or two. You're not doing it because you want the lights to be on tomorrow. You need to have something that you can rely on predictably for a long period of time. So this is the revised budget plan of finance. So I'm not going to go into too much detail of this, but if, if you're considering your participation one way or the other in the project, you'll want to have deep knowledge of these numbers, because these are the numbers that resulted from something called the Project Cost Estimate III. And that was the estimate that was done in 2022. And it was a shock because the cost of the project went up considerably, and had to do with supply chain. We just had a little supply chain, primarily in inflation and borrowing costs, but that isn't all of it. So the project, when it's all said and done, before our rebates, if you want to call them that, it's going to be $9.3 billion. Billion, yeah. It's. That's big, that's, that's a big number. You're almost getting into federal government numbers, except you put a T in there instead of trillions. So it's $9 billion. Now, the good news is, that is before we get the cost share from the federal government, and then that number turns out to be 7.9-plus billion. And then the Inflation Reduction Act had some other incentives to do the project, and that takes the amount down to 5.126 billion. And that's based on some assumptions. That's this cost estimate that's the PCE III, which just means it's an interim cost estimate. Now we're doing PCE II, which needs to be much more detailed, higher level of confidence that the numbers have been tested out with suppliers and financiers. This does include. This does include the connection of the plant to the transmission grid. It does not include any costs that have to be added to the grid to boost its capability to take the 462 megawatts. Right now, for Utah's, we'll be connecting the Pacific Corp system at the Antelope Substation. One of the things UAMPS was very good at was negotiating a transmission agreement with Pacific Corp that allows them to take energy from resources to connect to Pacific Corp's system and deliver them anywhere on UAMPS system. So the incremental cost won't be there for UAMPS members in Utah specifically. So that's an advantage to this project. And one of the challenges we have, the Inflation Reduction Act would allow us to get a 50% tax offset. But there are requirements in there for domestic content. In other words, that the energy and the equipment, the raw materials have to come from domestic sources. As I pointed out, there's only one place on the planet that can do the pouring and forging. We are working with the DOE and Congress to say, well, I think you've sort of put an inherent problem in here that nobody can solve. And I just had a meeting with somebody from South Korea today. We had a conversation about that particular issue. And they also confirmed, and they don't work for New Sun, but they're from South Korea. It is, in fact, the only place where this kind of work can be done. Oh, yes. Throw your water bottle out.
So is Pacific Corp now going to be involved with the project? Are they providing any funding, or is it just...?
Another great question. Pacific Corp has decided to go with a competing technology called the Natrum Technology. And it's a technology that Richard Hathaway has invested in. And it's a technology that's been ironically developing kind of simultaneously in the same place in Oregon that this technology was. So they're committed to that technology. We, of course, have spoken to them, and I'll speak to them again, and say, well, look, you're going to do one of these eventually. Why don't you take some of this project now? Because I think we're, my opinion is, we're probably ahead of them a little bit as far as being able to generate electricity. But it's something we keep working with them on. But they, I think, have a commitment to that technology. Now, their Integrated Resource Plan that Jackie was talking about has one of these small modular reactors in it. Recently, they just updated it and said, we probably need to put in two or three more to counteract the effects on the grid of shutting down all the coal plants in the West. So if you're in the business, you know you need to have that kind of resource from time to time. And about the only one that's readily available today, if I want to say six years from now is readily available, is this kind of technology. People say, well, just build a few more dams. We'll get more hydro. But they're talking about taking four of the dams off the Snake River. There is, well, why don't you just take water from this reservoir, pump it up the hill when you have extra energy, let it generate electricity when it runs back down? But you can't get people to let you build the reservoir if you don't have the reservoir. People talk about a lot of batteries. Stack batteries up about the size of this building and handle a 24-hour load for marine. It's just, so there's constraints, economic and electric constraints, that I think this has to be one of the solutions. Not all of them, but one of them. So the challenge for me personally is, this was set up by the existing members of UAMPS that are still involved in the project. They've said, hey, this price went up. This is a real big project. Let's face it, they, as an entity, those entities aren't going to be able to deliver this. They're not into funding technology for others. Not only that, there's limitations on how much municipal debt-free bonding you can do. So they said, if you can't bring the cost down from what it is today, which is about 105 to 89, we have something called the Tiger Team to review that PCE III, look at the PCE II, and bring that cost estimate down. So what'll happen? They'll take that cost estimate, they'll run it through the model that says, this is what the levelized cost of energy, which is basically what is the cost of the electricity that comes out of the plant into the grid? Then we aren't going to remain in the project. The other requirement they have is, they don't want to be, even if they hit that target for dollars, they also then said, well, we don't want to be the only ones in this. You need to have 80% of the capacity of the project under contract at the time we have to make this decision, which is in November. We aren't going to go forward with the project. So why that's a challenge for me is I'm trying to get that 80%. And so people want to know, well, how likely is that? Well, all I can say is, we're in enough discussions with people who are doing now serious due diligence that if that all happens, I mean, that's like it all, there is a chance that we will get people who have, excuse me, interest that would get us to 80%. But then the challenge is, they want our purchase agreements. They don't necessarily want to be owners like UAMPS members now. Well, in order to do that, we need to recruit private equity or investment dollars from other sources. And as I mentioned, I just met with a private equity company today. And so those private equity investors are going to want to see that these agreements we're trying to get in place are strong enough that they feel like it's low enough risk, and it's not going to be zero risk for sure, that they're willing to go ahead and provide the funding for these PPAs. So we're balancing, we're kind of walking a tightrope here between how do we get enough indication from people who are really interested to convince investors that the project can be a reality? And so that's really, to me, the biggest challenge for what I'm trying to do is find that, what I'll call it, an agreement that's a commitment, but it has a lot of precedent conditions. So you have to hit, well, two for sure. We have to hit the 28. I've level set that number wrong from the first day I went to work. I wish it was 28, because they might just be handing their contract in. Eighty-nine and eighty, then they will have, each individual entity will have its own requirements. They're called conditions precedent in agreement, so that they're not obligated to sign if we haven't hit all of the things they want us to do. So that's right now the challenge. So I will say...
How many are participating? Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And how many do we have total?
Fifty members in UAMPS.
So candidly, some of the counting I'm doing towards hitting that 80% includes some UAMPS members here to sell. So I'm not going to do anything, I'm not going to say anything more than that. You guys have the responsibility and obligation to your constituents. You have to make the decisions you think are right. That is part of the way to get us to the 80%. I will say, most of the conversations have had, of course, the price is a big issue, but they also don't want to be the only ones. So if we could get an anchor tenant, if you will, as developers speak, like if you're doing a mall, I think we're going to see some other people get in. But in order to try and hit the 80%, we're talking to investor-owned utilities, except for Pacific Corp, Yakima Mountain Power. We are talking to other entities, such as Deseret Power, Umpa, other utilities in Utah, certainly covering the waterfront in the Bonneville Power Administration footprint. And I would say that primarily, the people I've talked to have not just said, we're not doing nuclear because it really is about, well, can we afford it? What are the constraints? How do you manage your risks? All of the things that are associated in some ways with any big project. So that's why I think the potential is there, is there, but it's going to be pretty tough to hit. So, next slide, questions. I am sorry that I just droned on, but you know...
Here's a question. Eighty-nine dollars. What is the projected 2020? Yeah?
We will present that as a 2030 cost when we come back with that number. But it is, so right now, using 2022 dollars, the number's over 100, about 105. So we need to bring it down, so something north of that, probably.
How does that compare with other sources?
Well, the market's 100. You guys are paying that now to replace...
Or more.
More, to replace Hunter. If I were to walk down the street to the local solar developer, he'll tell you that he can do it for $30. And that's probably pretty close. An offshore wind farm, $60. Another gas plant will be sort of around that number, 89. If you put solar with a battery, it's going to be in the 60-ish range. And that's, most of the time, when you hear somebody talk about a solar with a battery, they're not talking about having a battery big enough to run for 24 hours. They basically just size the batteries to meet the peak that happens in the afternoon when everybody turns on their air conditioner. So when you read about these solar battery combinations, it's a little misleading in that they're not storing enough electricity to run all night.
But in 2030?
Well, in 2030, my sense is they will be higher. And there are studies by a company called Asard to put the range into the 80s and 90s years out. But it's, you know, one of the challenges you have, nobody ever really shows you their contract of what their pricing really is. They do press releases and say, this is how much it costs. Unless you're at the, you guys can, because you're a public entity, you have to disclose. But you don't necessarily have to disclose every bit of your commercial transaction. So it's kind of hard to get. Here's another way I'd answer your question, because I don't feel qualified to start projecting numbers for things I'm not working on. But here's another way to think about it. So when we built the first wind farm in America, Pacific Corp did, up in Wyoming, along with Emerald County PUD in Oregon, the cost of the wind was a couple hundred. The first solar projects we put in place were a couple hundred. And so the industry's matured. But just like anything, the best sites have already been taken. So here's one of the things I'd say. Savvy solar developers have found every spot in the Pacific Corp system where there's land, there's decent solar, and there's some transmission capacity available, where no capacity has to be built. It's just human nature. That's what we did, the utility. So just from that fact alone, the total cost, which you'll never see, which is, well, we had to make a transmission investment. We had to put in some batteries. So it's kind of hard to just pick out the energy. It's standalone, but I'm rambling on now, so apologize for that. The way I think about it is this. When we first put those wind turbines in in our first solar projects, they were supposed to last 10-plus years, 20-plus years. They lasted about 10. And so, well, that's a... I don't want to get in our discussion, because emotions... You can, I will just, if I agree, I'll nod. But the thing that I wanted to say is, because they don't actually last more than, let's say, 10 or 15 years, sometimes they're changed out, just as Jackie was saying, because the new turbine, if you can put it in the same location, you get a little more energy out, and you still have all the other infrastructure around you. But the fact is, the University of Utah, there's a course called Industrial Engineering 301. And one of the things they train you to do is, you have to put everything on the same time horizon when you're thinking about cost. So if this is a 60-year project, you only have to make that huge capital investment once in 60 years. Well, if you try to replace that output with, I'll just use solar panels, every 10 years, you're going to have to make a capital investment to replace those panels, because they deteriorate over time. They get new technologies, et cetera. So if you were really comparing the actual, for me, economic life comparison, you don't just say, this is what it would cost me today. How much is this site going to cost me over 60 years? And then I think this project competes on price. But if it's just today's incremental price that you can get from somebody developing a good site, we're not going to get anywhere near that, ever. So just be honest with us.
So we're at time now, and we have back-to-back this evening. So any other questions that we may have for the team we probably just need to submit over, and then we can get responses from those, because we've got to get to RDA here. So with that, I appreciate you all being here. And thank you so much for the presentation. And if there's more questions... Seeing there's nothing else, we are adjourned, and we will start RDA at 6:20.
So, any questions that you come up with? I'm in the deck right now.